I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of November 16, 2017, to order. Would the Court please take the roll?
President Jackson.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan, excused. Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Meritado.
Here.
Trustee Pojek.
Here.
Trustee Schroder.
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a few public hearings tonight, so here we go. Number one, is a public hearing by the Mayor and Board of Trustees for the purpose of discussing the annual tax levy assessment and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2017, and ending April 30, 2018. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board regarding this public hearing, please step forward. A motion would be in order to close. Trustee Schmidt.
Move we close the public hearing?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing for the purpose of discussing the annual tax levy is closed. Number two, public hearing regarding the 2017 tax levy for special service area number one, which is Glendale Lakes Business Park. I'd like to open this public hearing. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address the board on this special service area number one, please step forward. Being none, trustee Meritado.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing for special service area number one is closed. I would like to convene a public hearing regarding the 2017 tax levy for special service area number two, which is Glendale Industrial Park. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board regarding this, please step forward. Being none, trustee Light.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing for special service area number two is closed. I would like to convene a public hearing regarding the 2017 tax levy for special service area number three, which is High Grove East Industrial Park. If there's anyone that wishes to address the board regarding this, please step forward. Being none, trustee Pojek.
I'd like to move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing for special service area number three is closed. Number five, public hearing regarding the 2017 tax levy for special service area number four, High Grove West Industrial Park. If there's anyone who would like to address this board regarding this item, please step forward. Being none, trustee Meritado.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing for special service area number four is closed. Number six, I'd like to convene a public hearing regarding the 2017 tax levy for special service area number five, which is Glen Point Business Park. If there's anyone that wishes to address the board regarding this, please step forward. Being none, trustee Schroder.
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing for special service area number five is closed. Number seven, public hearing regarding, I'd like to convene a public hearing regarding the 2017 tax levy for special service area number six, which is Polo Club Heights Industrial Park. If there's anyone that would like to address the board regarding this, please step forward. Being none, trustee Schmidt.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing regarding special service area number six is closed. Number eight, I'd like to convene the public hearing regarding the 2017 tax levy for special service area number seven, which is Saco Industrial Park. If there's anyone that would like to address the board regarding this, please step forward. Being none, trustee Light.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing regarding the special service area number seven is closed. Number nine, public hearing regarding the 2017 levy for special service area number eight, Glendale Heights Business Park, is convened. If there's anyone that would like to address this board regarding this, please step forward. Being none, trustee Meritado.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing regarding special service area number eight is closed. Number ten, there's a public hearing scheduled for tonight concerning a proposed annexation agreement with Duke Realty and the owners of certain property located north of North Avenue and west of the northwest corner of the intersection of North Avenue and Swift Road. I hereby convene the public hearing. Tonight, we will take public comment from all interested persons concerning the approval of an annexation agreement with Duke Realty and the owners of certain property located north of North Avenue and west of the northwest corner of the intersection of North Avenue and Swift Road. The annexation agreement provides for the annexation, zoning, and development of the subject property. Notice of this public hearing was provided in accordance with law, and a copy of the draft annexation agreement was and is available for public inspection in the village clerk's office. At this time, anyone wishing to comment should step forward and state their name, address, and the party they are representing for the record. So if there's anyone here that would like to address this board regarding this annexation agreement with Duke Realty, please step forward now. Being none, trustee Schmidt.
Move we close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing regarding the Duke Realty annexation is closed. There is another public hearing tonight scheduled concerning a proposed intergovernmental agreement with Forest Preserve District of DuPage County. I hereby convene the public hearing. Tonight, we will take public comment from all interested persons concerning the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Forest Preserve District of DuPage County. The intergovernmental agreement provides for the annexation of certain forest preserve property, the termination of a lease with the forest preserve, and the raising of certain structures by the village. Notice of this public hearing was provided in accordance with law, and a copy of the draft agreement was and is available for public inspection in the village clerk's office. At this time, anyone wishing to comment should step forward and state their name, address, and the party they are representing for the record. So if there's anyone here that would like to address the board on the forest preserve annexation, please step forward. Being none, trustee Pojek.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing regarding the Forest Preserve District is closed. That's all the public hearings. So next, trustee Schmidt, it's your turn to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Rest your vocal cords for a while. The next coffee with the Mayor and Village Board is Saturday, December 2, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's Office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Help spread the Christmas cheer to those in Glendale Heights. The Village of Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program will be helping those in need this holiday season by providing meals and gifts to families. Gift tags listing wished-for items will be decorating trees located on the first floors of the Civic Center, Center for Senior Citizens, and the Sports Hub, beginning November 17. Please attach the gift tag to your unwrapped gift donation and return it to the Civic Center or to the Center for Senior Citizens by December 8. For more information on how you can get involved in Christmas sharing, please contact Debbie McKenzie at (630) 260-6050. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
While writing your holiday greeting cards to friends and family, please remember our military personnel who have or are currently serving our country during the holidays. The village is collecting holiday greeting cards, and will mail them in time for holiday delivery. Please drop off your holiday greeting cards to Village Hall by December 1. Please do not put cards in envelopes, decorate cards with glitter, and personal information, like email or social media. For more information, please call (630) 909-5327. The Village of Glendale Heights invites all residents to celebrate the start of the holiday season with the annual tree lighting ceremony on Monday, November 27. Mr. and Mrs. Claus will be our guest of honor, and the holiday decor and lights will illuminate the Civic Center. Enjoy the sounds of the holiday through the performance of a Glendale Heights choral group, starting at 7:00 p.m. Share the holiday spirit as Mayor Linda Jackson and the Village Board of Trustees and Mr. and Mrs. Claus illuminate the Civic Center complex with just a flick of a switch. And be sure to head upstairs to the council chambers after the ceremony to warm up with refreshments. For more information, please contact the Mayor's Office at (630) 909-5303.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Visit the historic house on December 4 at 6:30 p.m. at 311 Windy Point Drive, and experience what a Victorian Christmas might have been like 100 years ago. Admission is free, and refreshments will be served. Tours of the home will be offered, and children will have the opportunity to make Victorian decoration to take home. For information on the Victorian Christmas, please contact the Mayor's Office at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Meritado.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
To enable an efficient and effective street sweeping schedule, parking on streets is prohibited through the month of November, between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., on one designated day. Color-coded no parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Breakfast with Santa will be celebrated at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club on Saturday, December 9, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Breakfast includes all-you-can-eat pancakes with sausage and a beverage. The price for an adult breakfast is $5, and a children's breakfast is $3. Photos with Mr. and Mrs. Claus are $2. Law registration is required, and the event fee is paid at the door. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6050. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojek.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens is a senior health insurance program, SHIP, S-H-I-P, sponsored site and is offering an open enrollment assistance for senior citizens through December 7. Our trained volunteer counselors can provide one-on-one assistance to Medicare beneficiaries and their caregivers. SHIP volunteers can provide you with the information you need to make educated decisions about your insurance. This free statewide health insurance counseling service is sponsored by the Illinois Department of Insurance. Stop by the Center for Senior Citizens to pick up your prevention service program information. Please call the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050 to schedule an appointment for assistance with your health insurance questions. We would like to remind residents that per village code, do not rake or move leaves or yard waste onto village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any debris for safe driving. Yard waste collection occurs on the same day as regular waste and recycling pickup. The final collection date for yard waste has been extended to November 30 and December 1 due to the unseasonably warm fall. If you have any questions, please call Republic Services at (847) 981-0091. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroder.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join us on Thursday, December 7, from 10:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club for our annual senior holiday luncheon. Seniors will be served a delicious holiday turkey lunch, and will be entertained with live entertainment. We will also be accepting new, unopened toys and games to donate to families in need. The cost of the luncheon is only $10. For more information or to register for the annual senior holiday luncheon, please stop by the Center for Senior Citizens or call (630) 260-6050. And then remember that in observance of Thanksgiving, the Village of Glendale Heights offices will be closed on November 23 and 24. And we hope you have a wonderful and happy holiday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. And that's our announcement. And now I'd like to invite Christine Torres from Crow Corvath LLP to present our 2017 comprehensive annual financial report for CAFER.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Christine.
I appreciate being here today. I am here to present the audit results for the fiscal year ended April 30, 2017. And what we have here is just a quick summary of the report itself. If you were to read through the report, it's a large report. It is something that the village has submitted for the past 34 years to the GFOA, the Government Finance Officials Association, and has received the highest award regarding their reporting for that for 34 years in a row. So that is a huge accomplishment to continue to do for so many years in a row. And they've also, for the past several years, submitted to the budget award and also received that. So congratulations to the finance department and everyone for supporting that effort, and just to show the strength of the financial reporting and the importance that you place behind that is very, very encouraging. In conjunction with that, what we do when we do our audit is we issue a number of opinions based on our testing and the results that we find. The first opinion that we issue is on the financial statements themselves, and we are issuing an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That is the highest opinion that can be issued on the financial statements. It means that all of the information that we tested within the financial statements, the numbers, the notes, and the schedules, are all materially correct, that we have found support for all of the information that has been presented, and we have no issues with the amounts as they're presented here. There's no qualifications or things that are exempted from that opinion. So that's really the best place that you want to be for the village. This year, based on the amount of federal grants that the village received, we have also completed a single audit. Our opinion on that single audit for compliance and over our control testing is unmodified. Here again, we have no items for findings or anything that we're issuing in regards to that. All of our testing for that showed that the village was in compliance with all federal statutes and rules and the grant agreements. So we have nothing there to report that we found out of order. And finally, we do issue one more opinion related to the Tax Increment Redevelopment Allocation Act. What we have to do is we have to test certain compliance in expenditures within that fund, and make sure that they're following the rules and regulations of the state and the statute. We did not find any noncompliance during that testing itself. So there again, we have no findings or issues that we're issuing in regards to that. So all of those are the places that you want to be with your opinions, saying that we did not find anything wrong through our testing in both the financial aspect and compliance aspects. What I have next here is just a quick summary of what's within the report. Again, the report is quite large due to the submission to GFOA. I do recommend that if you get the, when you get the report and look through it, that you read that first section called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. It is a short summary of everything within that report, and provides a good explanation of what happens from year to year, and also gives some explanation for increases and decreases, and shows some trend information. So instead of plowing through the entire report, I do recommend that beginning part, you do take a quick look at to understand everything in detail. Here's a quick summary of where the accounts ended up at year end. This is at a village-wide basis. You have your column for your governmental activities, which includes all your general government activities, your public safety, your public works information. And then your second column represents your business-type activities. So here, that's the water fund and the golf course fund, and those two items are combined into that second column. Our second slide here just shows the statement of activity summary. And this again is a summary of the revenues and expenses for the year. And it shows, again, the governmental activities in one column and the business-type activities in the second column. You'll see down here at the very bottom, the last line, change in net position, is really where your net income or your net loss is for the year. And you'll see that both of those are positive this year due to watching revenues and expenses and responding to the different fluctuations throughout the year and holding steady and making sure that you're monitoring that through you go, as you go along. Now, our next slide here is really just based on the general account. Now, this is where you take out some of those specialized funds, like the motor fuel tax fund, the TIF fund, and really some of the specialized activities. And this is your general operating account. This is where you show the basic services that the village is providing and showing where things ended up for the year. So when we take a look at this, it's good to see that your fund balance is positive. You're at a $12 million in total, and that throughout the year, you did end up with an increase in fund balance of almost, just over $1 million. So that really shows that the village had a better year than it has in the past few years. It's been watching the revenues. There's been some grants that came in this year that helped boost that up a little bit. And it helped to increase your number of months of expenditures and fund balance. This is something that I know you've been watching over the past few years and has slowly been increasing up after some lulls there when property taxes and EAVs and a lot of other revenue streams dropped. So we're at 7.1 as of April 30. And that is above the village policy of four months, and it is above the GFOA recommendation of two months. So that is a good place to be in at the end of the year and something to continue to monitor to make sure that you're staying at a healthy level and have some of those reserves in place in case something were to happen again to some revenue streams. And that is everything that I have at a high level in regards to the audit and where the village ended up. I'd be more than happy, if anyone has any questions, to answer those or go into any more detail about any aspects of the audit.
I have one question. Because of the state not having a budget, how has that affected our community?
The state not having a budget affects the community in several different ways. First of all, it starts to limit a lot of the grant opportunities because a lot of the grants that happen at the state level can't be paid to you without a budget. If there's no appropriation, you can't get that extra money. Some grants that are federally funded, that doesn't affect. That comes through the state. Those are still going to be passed through. But any type of state grant. So several years ago, the state of Illinois offered specific grants in related to construction of streets or bridges or improvements. And a lot of those were stopped when there was no other budget. Not having a state budget can also impact other revenue streams that they cannot pay out until there's an appropriation. So the fact that there is a budget this year helps those revenues move along and gives a little more opportunity than there has been in past years.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Christine. Really appreciate all the hard work. And a special thank you to all of executive staff for watching their budgets. And a special thank you to the entire finance department for their hard work and watching how and where our money goes and keeping track of everything. But thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, you have the consent agenda before you, trustee Meritado.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business. And before we start new business, you need to remove item number 18. So we will start with a motion to waive first reading on new business items number 15 through 17. Trustee Schroder.
Motion to waive first reading on new business items number 15 and 17.
15, 16, 17.
Right, 15 through 7. Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on items 15 through 17. Number two, an ordinance providing for the levy assessment and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2017, and ending April 30, 2018, for the village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois. This is first reading. Number three, an ordinance for the levy and An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number One, Glendale Lakes Business Park, and this is first reading. Number four. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Two, which is Glendale Industrial Park, and this is first reading. Number five. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Three, which is High Grove East Industrial Park, and that is first reading. Number six. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area, oh, which one am I on? Special Service Area Number Four, which is High Grove West Industrial Park, and that is first reading. Number seven. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Five, which is Glen Point Business Park, and that is first reading. Number eight. An ordinance for the levy and assessment for taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Six, which is Polo Club Heights Industrial Park, and that is first Number nine. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning April, no, beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Seven, which is Saco Industrial Park, and that is first reading. Number 10. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Eight, which is Glendale Heights Business Park, and that is first reading. Number 11. An ordinance for the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, abatement of the 2017 tax levy for $3 million in general obligation bond series 2006. That is first reading. Number 12. An ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, abatement of the 2017 tax levy for $5 million general obligation bonds series 2008, and that is first reading. Number 13. An ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, partial abatement for the 2017 tax levy for $8,825,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond series 2009. That is first reading. Number 14. An ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, partial abatement of the 2017 tax levy for $29,940,000 general obligation bond series 2010, and that is first reading. Number 15. Is an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit outdoor storage for 900 Regency Drive in High Grove Center of DuPage East Campus in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois? First reading has been waived, and this would be ordinance number 2017-61. Trustee Meritato.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-61 is approved. Number 16. Is an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at 254 Town Center Lane in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois? This is Sabrina's Cafe. It's from November 2nd, 2017 Committee of the Hall meeting. First reading has been waived, so this is ordinance 2017-62. Trustee Pojek.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-62 is approved. Number 17. An ordinance rejecting all bids for printing the 2018 village calendar and awarding the project to Take It Incorporated, DBA Creekside Printing. First reading has been waived, and this would be ordinance number 2017-63. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Chester.
I've got a question. It says Creekside Printing doing business as, is this a new company, Take It? Anybody know about that?
Creekside is a company that we use all the time for our newsletter and so forth. That's just their corporation doing business under Creekside. They've not had a name changed.
Oh, okay. Because I've never seen that name before.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-63 is approved. Item number 18 has been removed. So item number 19 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 8 entitled Traffic Schedules of the Title VII entitled Parking Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and this is Permit Parking on Whitman Drive, and that is first reading. Number 20. Is a resolution approving the execution of the annexation agreement by and between the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, Duke Realty Limited Partnership, and the owners of certain property generally located on the north side of North Avenue and west of the northwest corner of the intersection of North Avenue and Swift Road. This would be resolution number 2017-R-98. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Resolution number 2017-R-98 is approved. Number 21. A resolution approving intergovernmental agreement by and between the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County and the Village of Glendale Heights. This is resolution 2017-R-99. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-R-99 is approved. Next on our agenda is public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, a motion to adjourn would... Trustee Schroeder.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Meritato, I believe you have Committee of the Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call a Committee of the Hall meeting on November 16, 2017, the Regent Norwich President. Do we have any add-ons, regulations? No? Good. Do we have any public comment? Okay, that's also good. We go to committee recommendations. Number one, plan commission. A recommendation to approve a tax amendment to allow automobile internet online sales with silvery automobile repair and automobile laundry as a conditional use in the I-Lite Trustee Schmidt?
Move to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Okay, I have one joint. Now, this is going to be primary sales for sale tax in Glendale Heights?
Yes, sir. So this is the first item? I'm sorry, I had to run out in the hall for a second. The tax amendment would allow internet car sales in the industrial district. The next item is for that specific use, and it would be point of sale in the village.
Okay. Thank you.
And we had that confirmed with the Illinois Department of Revenue.
Thank you.
Take a vote.
Any motion?
You have a motion and a second.
A second? You just need to vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Being none, we'll move it to the board. Number two. A recommendation to approve an application for conditional use in the I-Industrial PUD District for automobile internet online sales with silvery automobile repair and automobile laundry located at 500 Mitchell Road, Greater Chicago Motors. Mayor Jackson.
Move to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Discussion.
Mike?
I just had a couple of quick questions, that's all. As far as parking on the street of inventory and such like that, that'll be not a big problem?
That would not be permitted.
Okay. And then, I'm guessing they have storage for other facilities for storage purposes? How much inventory gets switched around? You know, was my second question.
The applicant is here this evening, but it's my understanding that everything would be stored at this location within the enclosed building. They would have some vehicles parked outside during the daylight hours, but nothing parked outside overnight.
Okay. And then service of the cars, pre-sales and/or warranty? As far as that being allowed?
As part of the conditional use, it would be allowable within the minor repair prior to sale, so prepping them for sale.
Okay, so for the pre-sale part of it. And then disposal of oils, tires, antifreeze? How's this done by service, or is this something that?
That I can't answer, but the applicant is here. I apologize.
Okay.
Can you ask up to the podium and name and address, please?
Thank you. Sam Abbas, 1850 North Elston Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Thanks, Sam.
We actually have, to answer your question, we have a service that comes out and collects tires and oil.
Tires, oil, antifreeze, and everything else like that, because I know, you know, I just didn't want to see it sitting around. I know how it is.
Neither do we. And they actually pay us to take it, so.
Okay, that was my biggest concern. That was it, really, for me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Being none, we'll move it to the board. Number three. A recommendation to approve an application for rezoning from AE Agriculture and the State District to C3 General Commercial District located at 764 East North Avenue. Mary?
Move to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Okay, being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move it to the board. Number four. A recommendation to approve an application for the properties located at 764, 768 East North Avenue, east of Glenon Road, for the consideration consolidation to solidate the properties from two parcels, 764 and 768 East North Avenue, to one parcel and a conditional use to allow a construction and contractor's office, an off-street parking lot, and outdoor storage of construction equipment such as aerial lifts, skisters, construction trailers, and parking for 15 total business-related work trucks and vans in the rear yard. Trustee Light?
I make a motion. We move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being none, we'll move it to the board for recommendation. Number five. A recommendation to approve an amendment to the Village of Glendale Heights Comprehensive Master Plan Future Land Use Map as it pertains to the area north of North Avenue and west of Swift Road. Trustee Pojek?
Move it to the board, a recommendation.
Second. Is there a second?
Second. I second.
Oh, great. Discussion. Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Being none, we'll move it to the board.
I just want to make sure that we didn't say move it to the board with a recommendation to concur. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, move ahead. Discussion regarding, there is none. Trustee Pojek?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.